It's five thirty right now, Janice, if you would like to do a roll call. And start the meeting, you're more than welcome.
Sorry, I was trying to get unmuted. Let me see if I can find my list.
Do you need some help here?
Yeah, I am trying to find my list and I can't find it right off.
That's okay. Um, here in person, um, we have, um, John.
Yep.
Okay, John is present, Brett.
Here.
And Laura.
Present.
Uh, Janelle.
Present.
And Tori.
Present.
And then, um, online, we have Ryan.
Yep.
And Janice.
Yes, okay.
Absent, we have Jerry Brummer. And we have Nancy Fondren.
We just had one more person join us.
I don't know who John is.
Okay, so that gives us a quorum.
Yes, we do have a form.
Okay. We get out where it's. I call this special meeting of the special uh, uh, extension advisory board to order.
So Janice, uh, can you hear me? This is, uh, Eric Blaine, the county legal counsel.
Yes.
Um, so I want to thank you guys all for being here tonight. I know you've got a lot of other things to do. Um, as you heard, I'm the county's legal counsel and I, I'd like to start by mentioning that although I am an attorney, I am not your attorney, I don't advise and give legal advice to the extension service advisory district. Um, nevertheless, um, uh, I was asked to be here and I have some suggestions as to how and what the, um, board might do in light of these most recent allegations from Justin Alderman, alleging that the board violated public meetings laws. Um, my suggestion is twofold. Um, as happened last time, I might suggest that the board delegate authority to Rebecca Keegan to respond um, on behalf of the board and what the response would include um, is a message to Mr. Alderman as the accuser and a copy goes to the Oregon Government Ethics Commission at the same time. And unlike last time, I would also like to suggest that the board make that kind of delegation, um, permanent or long term. What I'm kind of thinking is that this won't be the first time or the last time that Mr. Alderman makes these kind of accusations. Um, and if the delegation of authority to Rebecca to, uh, respond on behalf of the board is made permanent or long term, there may not necessarily need to be another one of these special meetings. Um, and you guys can go about your your day with a little bit, um, fewer obligations under time. Um, now that doesn't necessarily mean that there won't be meetings. So for instance, if we get a new, not we, but if the board gets a new accusation, um, the board might decide, you know, we need to meet together and talk about this, that, that is an option that will be made. Um, but this will be just one more arrow in your quiver. You guys are busy, you're volunteers. I speaking for myself, I don't think you deserve to be subjected to this. Um, and if it's any consolation, you're not the only ones being subjected to this. So that is my suggestion as to how perhaps this can be, uh, processed expeditiously. The response for this particular allocation, um, is due Friday of this week. Um, because the legislature in its wisdom decided that public bodies, including volunteer boards, should have no more than twenty-one days out of the days. Um, and that unfortunately is a millstone around the neck of every public body in the state of Oregon. Um, unless you have any questions, um, I'm happy to, to, um, provide any additional insight that I can, of course, short of providing you with legal advice. Rebecca, um, has been very gracious about being willing to serve as sort of the um, respondent, um, and for that I am quite grateful.
So we have received then a formal written complaint slash accusation.
Yes, uh, have you seen it? It sounds like no.
No.
So he's got a certain amount of, or the grievance has to be a certain amount of time. Oh, so that's heard too, and, and has that been met?
So the timeframe, um, is thirty days from the date of the meeting and although this is dated August twenty-eighth, uh, it was sent on August twenty-ninth and part of the response, you know, if he is late, if he missed that thirty day time, part of response would be to address his time. Um, I did some work in thirty hours and I counted that as be within the thirty days, but that was quicker during that.
Oh, we have thirty days to respond to the.
Uh, good question. Now, so the, the way the statute is written on the statute is one ninety-two seven oh five, if you want to read it in your leisure. Um, a complainant like Mr. Alderman has to file, um, these accusations within thirty days of the meeting that alleges had some deficiencies. After he files these accusations, the law gives the public body twenty-one calendar days to file the response.
I'm wondering, I'm speaking to the board and Eric, you're, uh, please weigh in, um, but I looked into it a little bit because we serve the public. And so do we have the ability or responsibility to just acknowledge to the public our error as a resolution and how we corrected it? And does that address then this grievance or do we also in addition have to directly?
Jerry, is that you? I'm sorry, I wasn't sure what the number was, so I didn't answer it, but I've seen you coming through. So just one second and I'll put you on speaker. Um, we're just talking right now.
And I'm, I'm.
You're on speaker, Jerry.
Okay, thank you.
That's Jerry Brummer.
I'm sharing that just to see if maybe there's a way we could get out of our pattern and be a little pro- proactive, we could acknowledge to the public our error and maybe a corrective measure, just a suggestion could be that we, um, at one of our next board meetings have a training on how to hold public meetings in a proactive way.
Was there actually a violation?
Let me summarize what the allegations are, uh, at least as regards to the advisory board. Uh, Mr. Alderman says that there was a meeting that was held at five thirty for which the meeting notice did not go out, uh, at least twenty-four hours beforehand. Um, he also says that under circumstances which I personally don't think are quite well addressed in his written document, um, even providing twenty-four hours notice is not sufficient under the law. That's his accusation. The meeting notice was sent out at about two fifteen P M. On, uh, July thirtieth. The meeting, um, that, that, there were three documents distributed. One of those documents is a, you know, um, email that contained two, two attachments. The email subject line says that the extension advisory board will be meeting on, uh, July thirty-first at five thirty. The body of the text had a typo and it said, the board will be meeting at three o'clock. The public notice that was part of that email said three o'clock, but the meeting agenda said five thirty. So there's a typo. Uh, after the typo was discovered, there was a, um, correction that was emailed out. And that correction said, this is a correction, meetings at five thirty.
What kind of the correction?
The correction went out at three forty-two P M. Well, three, I'm sorry, three twenty, uh, three forty-two P M on July thirty. So the day of the meeting. So you can read Mr. Alderman's allegations, Mr. Alderman's allegations are that there was a meeting at three P M that did not happen and then there was a separate meeting at five thirty for which the meeting notice was inaccurate. That is his accusation. Again, I can't provide legal advice, but you had a question about what sort of responses there could be. The statute again is one ninety-two seven oh five. And in subsection two, it describes what the response to the grievance, um, needs to be. And it describes sort of three types of responses. It's type number one, deny the facts and circumstances set forth in the grievance, accurately reflect the conduct of the governing body and set forth the facts and circumstances of the governing body and the reasons why those facts and circumstances do not amount to a violation. So say, wrong in the facts, wrong in law. Second possible response. Admit that the facts and circumstances set forth in agreements accurately reflect the governing body but deny that those facts and circumstances amount to a violation of the law. So say you got the facts right, but even with your facts right, you haven't shown that anything went wrong. The third response. Admitting that the conduct of the governing body amounted to a violation and setting forth the steps the governing body will take to cure the violation, including but not limited to rescinding the decision taken in violation of the public meetings laws or, uh, acknowledging in a properly noticed and conducted meeting held within forty-five days of the governing body's original decision that there was an error. Good cause exists not to rescind the decision and the governing body's practices will be modified to ensure there won't be future violations of the public meetings law. Now again, that's admitting that there is a violation and then taking steps to correct it, including but not limited to those examples. Now I know other public bodies have said, yes, we have made an error. We have not, um, we have not been able to do things perfectly and they have forthrightly said we have not done things perfectly, but gosh, we're going to try. There are other times when the public bodies, including the extension service advisory district, excuse me, the advisory board has received one of these, uh, complaints and allegations and said these do not correspond with the facts and the law of last one that was submitted to you said that the minutes are, your meetings are not publicly available despite the fact that the gentleman who made the allegations, Mr. Alderman, had actually received the minutes. So, um, I can't tell you what, uh, options under the statute the board may want to pursue. The government ethics commission is a lot of these type of accusations from Mr. Alderman. And, um, I've used this analogy several times and, and you may have heard it from me, so there would be, um, you, we're all old enough to remember Margaret Thatcher. Uh, in the late nineteen eighties, she was going to make a presentation in a, uh, conference and the hotel she was in was bombed by a terrorist group. They wanted to assassinate her. Uh, they missed. Uh, I think they killed some poor valet, but they missed. And Margaret Thatcher gave her speech the next day, said, we are not intimidated and the government, and the terrorist group said, you have to keep in mind that you got lucky this time. We just have to be lucky once. You have to be lucky every single time. Otherwise we'll get you. And that unfortunately is the burden that Oregon public bodies, including volunteer boards are in. Um, you guys have the obligation to do everything perfectly. And if you don't do everything perfectly, then an accuser can find one flaw meaningless or otherwise uh, and then crow about how they discovered that you violated the law. Um, of course, not all violations of law really are equal. But the unfortunate truth is these rules are very technical. They, they are not written to be user friendly. Um, and that again is the millstone that unfortunately all public bodies in the state have to.
I have, um, another question. Within this grievance are two things. One of them pertains to the commissioner.
Yes.
And then it appears that, uh, he feels that there was a quorum at that meeting and that violated the law. Are we responsible to responding to that second piece? So we would only be responding to number one, the improperly noticed meetings of the advisory board. That would be our response to government ethics office.
And the, and the accuser, yes.
And the accuser.
So you are not responsible for a- addressing any other violation that is addressed to, uh, another public body.
And will that be handled then by county?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to make sure that was clear since there was two things in here. I figured such, but.
So I see that Rebecca's on the phone. So if we were to delegate.
I'm just, I don't know.
I'm sorry.
I just started reading, sorry, yeah.
To delegate authority to you to respond to this, would we have an opportunity to review that response before it winds out?
Um, only if you had another special meeting.
Oh, we can't do that via, um, to, right, okay, thank you.
Right. Um, and, and that's a question that gets caught, brought up in a lot of volunteer boards is, you know, and we just communicate by email. Um, and the government ethics commission, um, has advised that that type of thing over what they call substitute banners, so not scheduling and not, you know, hey, it's John's birthday, let's make sure we get a cake. Would be what they call a serial meeting and for that, you know, if you're going to be having that kind of substantive discussion, uh, they've advised that that's something that is to be happening in a public meeting.
So then how, how, how Rebecca, would you go about determining which of those options? There were like three of them, different types of responses that you could make? How would you go about doing that?
So yes, I'm sorry, I can inject. So, um, Rebecca is a. Okay, and provide her legal advice as to how to go about, risk going onto this. Um, because I don't want to at this meeting say how exactly I would advise her. Um, because that would be violating the attorney-client privilege, um, but um, I would be able to work with her and, um, help to ensure that that response does go out by Friday.
So I have another question. When you began the conversation, um, the delegation of authority to Rebecca to respond and then you guys will work that out on, on what, how that will happen since she's a county employee and work for the county, um, but you, I, I could have heard wrong. You made the comment or what I heard was that we would be delegating this authority beyond this instance in the event that Mr. Alderman chooses to file future grievances against this advisory group.
So that was a suggestion.
Okay.
And the, the idea is that, you know, you guys are volunteers. I don't want to be presumptuous of your time. Um, and it's likely that the advisory board is going to get more of these type documents, these kind of accusations. Um, and you may decide that it's expeditions to, uh, have an additional meeting when these things arise and that's perfectly fine. You may decide that that is unnecessary and that, uh, you might want to delegate authority on a permanent or a long-term basis. I personally don't have strong feelings either way. If you're willing to have additional meetings like this on relatively short timeframe, again, the response is due between twenty-one days. Um, so much the better, but, um, if you don't know, if you've got the time and the bandwidth to do that, I think delegating authority to Rebecca might be an option to pursue. For this specific purpose. For, right, so when, uh, what I might suggest, um, is that the delegation of authority be limited to the type of, uh, accusations made under one ninety-two seven oh five.
Not sure how strong I feel either way. Is, is this the second time we responded to him?
This will be.
Yes, yes.
Okay, um, I don't know.
Um.
Can we discuss that about long-term delegation of authority only because, um, you know, I'm just wondering if it begins to be a flurry of these, then we may have to do some things internally to address business on how we're going to proceed. I, you know, see what I'm getting at? And if all of a sudden we come to a meeting, Rebecca says, and, and I'm not saying this out of any level of mistrust or lack of communication, not at all, but that we come in and say, hey, guess what, this we've just got another one. And since we've decided we're going to start meeting quarterly, I believe instead of twice a year.
It was a suggestion and then, um, there hasn't been any like, let's do this as far as a calendar, but, um, that was a suggestion.
Right. I don't know. That's just my feeling is that I would rather know that these things are coming in, especially if we're only going to be meeting twice a year. Um, or even four times a year. It's not like we're meeting monthly or bi-weekly, right? It's, um, that's just my thought. I, and I'm willing to have that discussion because I can be sweaty either way probably. And if y'all are like, I hate darkness, I hate going down here, I hate this meeting.
Can you speak a little bit? And I only say this because I'm going into year two being in this position and prior to being in this position, there was meetings once a year.
Once a year, yeah.
And then it was, um, twice a year. So it wasn't just budget, it was a budget and then it was in, um, like overview. So you guys understood um, kind of what was going on in each, uh, program, like a program update and um, over the last year, there's just been a lot of additional things that have happened um, throughout the community and other boards and other things. So it's not just this board it's happening to. So there's been with the minutes piece, um, uh, this board has never had their minutes online and that was a push that he would like to have had them online. So I put all digital minutes that were recorded um, on the computer that Kim had prior in my position, um, she was in the position before me, um, we put those online. So we just kind of, um, but everything else was only budget meetings. It wasn't anything else, but I, John, if you don't mind, like.
No, that's, that, you did, you did a fantastic job of speaking for me. Because that was, you know, originally it was one meeting a year and we got everything in one lump and by the time you were done with the meeting, you were kind of.
Yeah.
So we broke it into two, which gives us a better overall presentation of the different functions that we're serving. You know, with like the SNAP Ed and this, and the four H and this and that, they all had their, their, we didn't have to sit through nine different.
Oh, yeah. So like before, um, each, each, uh, individual gave a ten-minute presentation. And now we can get a better look at what each is going through by doing half of them at a time. So that's kind of where we went to doing it twice a year instead of just once a year because it gave us a little better view of what they actually do.
And easier to digest instead of all of it at one go.
Yes, because those ten minutes ended up being twenty or thirty minute presentations and we were there for like three or four hours. So it got, it got long.
Yeah, and, and it was great to break it. And as far as the quarterly thing, I mean, if that's something that, that this group decides is better, great. Um, honestly, you know, we're still only topping four meetings a year, essentially. So hopefully with a little better typos or a little less typos, we won't have a lot of issues with this stuff anyway.
Well, I think my big thing, when we talked about it was, uh, given the responsibility of the budget and we had a lot of questions, or at least I did and dug a little deeper than I think it's been done in the past. And given what's occurring at the greater scale affecting the budget, you know, from the best of the state down to the county level, that a quarterly meeting would, for me personally, give me more information, given the responsibility of reviewing a budget. Um, and, and then we had talked about getting, um, quarterly, and I know we're getting away from this thing, so I can wrap it up real quick, but getting those results like where are we at the budget at, on this, you know, these areas, are we at twenty percent, fifty percent, ninety percent of budget projected and everything for the year that we were seeing those on a regular basis instead of at the end of year like, oh, okay. Anyway, that was just my thoughts about a full meeting, but maybe a little more meat around the budget side of things.
Yes, I didn't hear anybody argue with you.
Jerry, do you have anything to add to the discussion?
Well, I'm just wondering, uh, are we in a position where we need to have legal counsel there when we have a meeting? So if some of this stuff comes up, they can tell us to go ahead or tell us not, or whatever. Because like, it appears to me, I don't think as laypeople, we're going to know, uh, whether, you know, the allegations are, are, you know, nature or minor or you know, whatever. So I guess that's my question. Uh, would, would it be humorous to have legal counsel on our meetings?
Rebecca, do you know?
I'm the wrong person to ask that question. I'll be honest. I don't know what kind of legal counsel you're going to be looking for um, on what type of questions you're going to be asking. Um, budgetarily, the questions that you just asked, I have to say, um, when we had that SNAP Ed meeting where Mr. Alderman, um, uh, filed the grievance against, um, having that meeting, you guys, um, made a motion to carry out being able to fund that family community health position, which was the previously SNAP Ed position at a hundred percent this next year and for the remainder of the year after September, which I wrote a budget that you guys all approved of and now it's got Swiss, it's Swiss cheese. I'll be honest with you. Um, I am going to have a really hard time, um, and I'm working with finance on trying to understand how I will penny pinch on all kinds of things, but everything will be taken, there will be taken, money will be taken out of multiple line items to make one position funded fully. It can be done, but I can't give you something to be twenty percent, eighty percent, a hundred and twenty percent, but then this one is, you know, so it, there is, it's not touching contingency. I can say that. But, um, on that same note, um, there, if there is something that happens, we had a water spigot break and I had to pay a plumber, like those things still happen, but I didn't, I mean, I had a big chunk of money in there for that, but it's not going to be there when we're funding a, an eighty thousand dollar position.
Right, right. And I don't, I was saying that that was that, you know, I, I just thought that at the quarterly updates, I understand what we approved, but that we would see where we were budgetarily, that, you know, we started with a hundred thousand dollars and now six months into the year, we're at twenty thousand dollars. Why is that, right? You know, instead of.
And that's an easy reply for me. I can do that, no problem. Um, because we, like, just today, we got, um, a report from finance and we get those, um, monthly and I have. We like just today, we got re- um a report from finance and we get those um monthly and I have even just a spreadsheet that says. Um every time I pay a bill, each line item, I take it off of that line item, so I know what. That is, I could send that to you tomorrow to so you can see what that looks like, um where we're at, um but. What it will look like for a legal counsel or needing that, asking that question, I don't know.
Well, that that really isn't what I meant, uh Rebecca, what I was talking about, if we have legal counsel there, Mister Alderman's there. And he brings this stuff up, then we have somebody that can guide us, whether to go ahead and have a meeting, whether or not to. Or or whatever, and I think I think that's that's where we need some help.
Well, we did.
But I think.
Would meet, I mean, nobody said they were going to leave that room, even though there was accusations that we were in some. Kind of, I don't know, issues.
I am curious.
But I think what Rebecca's saying is if we hire legal counsel. Our budget is pretty tight right at the moment and is there even room to hire legal counsel? Right now, but I'm not sure that's. The um issue before us right now, we need to take care of this um. And either have some discussion or somebody needs to make a motion so we can have discussion on that motion.
Well, it would it would just thought so, cause I know several times city council meetings and stuff. This type of stuff's come up and our legal counsel said, no, he doesn't read it the same way and we went ahead and had meetings and so. That that was where I was coming from.
Well, I would make a motion. Given permission from the chair. To allow Rebecca to uh consult with the county barrister. And find a proper way to move forward on this issue. And as a second part of that motion, I would not have an issue. With allowing the two of them to field. Future issues of this nature. I think that's it.
So then would we be delegating authority to Rebecca to then consult the?
To consult the county's like as the county employee, she can consult the county's legal. Whereas we cannot, right?
Yeah, I cannot give you guys legal advice.
Is is there a second on the motion so we can do discussion?
I I think maybe we need to really clarify.
We need just second, we need a second on the motion before we can discuss. Okay, Brett is seconding it.
Uh Jerry seconded.
Oh, Jerry, okay, sorry. Okay, now, um with that, Janelle. Can uh speak to the motion.
I'd like to see that motion maybe a little more. Jermaine to this particular subject that Rebecca is delegated authority by the advisory board to respond to Jase. Is it Jay Justin Alderman's grievance of August twenty eight, two thousand twenty five? That she's delegated the authority to respond to that.
So you only want her to be. Already respond to that.
I believe, I believe that's totally um changing the motion. Um and I believe that if you would like to do that. Totally change it, it has to be voted down by everybody, I mean voted down, if it doesn't pass. Then you can make a new motion because that's a contradictory on this motion. Does that make sense?
If we're gonna do that, I would like to just put timeframe on that, so. That's why I asked when the next meeting is so that maybe we can review it at the next meeting, that she has the authority to. Uh we delegated authority to Rebecca to respond to these kinds of accusations on that. ORS one nine two point seven oh five and then um. Review it again at our next meeting. And then you can report out to us as to how many of these have you had to respond to.
She's saying that at the future meeting, then it's regular meeting.
Oh, I got.
Then there'd be a presentation thing, here's number of allegations that.
So I don't know who just talked.
It was Laura, Laura.
Laura.
Yeah.
Are you uh wanting to make an amendment to this motion?
I think it was just discussions.
Yeah, what I might suggest is um you guys to deliberate among yourselves about the sort of substance. Of the motion and then when you get to sort of a position where you think you've had enough discussion. Um I can suggest maybe uh an amendment or a um a a clarification as to what it is. That the board would like to do, so I I think the tough bit is on you guys, which is decide. How you want to respond, what would you like to do, then when there's a consensus on that, I think the easier bit will be to try to put them to words.
Okay.
Okay, so uh Brett, do you have any discussion to add? Uh what way you would like to see the motion go?
I guess I would uh as a discussion, I would like to uh. To say that um maybe we should drop the the permanent thing and and put that for later discussion and go ahead and give the. The authority to Rebecca to work with Eric Eric about this specific instance and. And I think that it sounds to me like there's a little reluctance in the group here to to move ahead with the per. Permanent thing until we discuss it further, not to say that we wouldn't do that, but.
Okay, Laura.
Uh yes, what I just stated, I I would like to see is put a timeframe on it. Um maybe at the discuss it at the next meeting, um but I am in agreeance that we. Should move forward with delegating authority to Rebecca to respond to this particular um allegation.
Okay, Janelle.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with having Rebecca respond to this current allegation um grievance by Mister Alderman.
Tori.
Uh well, for discussion, because we do have that twenty one day timeframe and with delegating authority to Rebecca, that gives us that. Extra opportunity for her to get legal advice, is there a way that maybe we could create something where um she then. Provides us the information that she's moving forward with, so we have that communication.
Like last time it happened, she did forward her response to him and the ethics. Uh board, um so we did know what the response was.
I wouldn't be able to argue against the legal advice, but it would be good to know what's going on, like I do appreciate that. Communication of discussion.
And I believe last time um the motion um included um. Uh sending us the response. That she gave to um. Uh the ethics board and um. The person giving the allegation. If I remember correctly. Ryan.
Uh I'm playing with granting permission for the current and future. Kind of as the motion was stated.
Jerry.
Yeah, no, I I think we're headed down the right track, I I just think, you know, we need to have. Uh somebody there available if Rebecca needs it and and I think this is a good way to go. Uh my other question would be, uh Eric, give us three options there to begin with and. I assume we kind of need to decide what we want to do with one of those three options, am I correct?
I think what uh was being said was that um if we give her. The authority, then um as a county employee, she will work with her counsel. To decide what the best option is.
Okay, okay, that sounds good.
Um has Nancy come on?
No.
Okay. So just from looking at um. There's more that would just like it to be for this allegation and at a at our future meeting to. Discuss a um. A ongoing um. Uh ability to deal with issues, um so uh. There's two ways that could um. Go about this is the current motion could be um. Withdrawn, but it has to be agreed to by the. Motion, the person who made the motion and the person who seconded it. Or we can vote on this motion and uh. Those who don't want the permanency of it, just vote no. And the others can vote yes, um and then we can go from there. So um John, I will leave it to you on how you want to go about that.
Would you reread the motion?
Yeah, so what I might suggest um is um. I I I think I understand what it is that you're you're getting at, but I might might suggest withdrawing the motion. Um and then I can suggest um an alternative way to phrase it.
An amendment?
Yeah, and part of the reason I say that is to make it clear into the the uh minutes. Just what it is that's been delegated, because what I don't think anyone wants is for someone to say. Ah, the motion was defective because you only said you asked Rebecca to look into it, you didn't ask Rebecca to do X Y Z. So what I might suggest is um assuming you want to to withdraw the motion. Um and then I can suggest a a a different way to phrase it.
I think that would be a fair to think, fair thing to do, so I would withdraw that so we can make amendments to it that would make it more.
Okay, so John is. And Jerry, you are withdrawing your second?
Yes.
Okay, that motion is dead and we are. Um Eric, would you like to um address the board, please?
Yeah, so based on the discussion, it sounds like there is interest in and asking Rebecca to respond on behalf of the board. But that it would be limited to the set of allegations and not be permanent or long term. Um I don't think this has to be part of the the motion, but there is also interest in maybe revisiting this at a future meeting. Um so what I might suggest, if that's correct, is a motion to delegate authority to Rebecca Keegan. To respond to the ORS one nine two seven oh five accusations made by Justin Alderman. Uh that were received on August twenty ninth, two thousand twenty five.
And that's with your assistance, with your help as needed.
Um so I, as a county attorney, will be able to work with Rebecca under attorney client privilege um. Um because she is a county employee, I will be able to um give her legal advice. Um and um help her to the said that she asked.
Yeah, perfect.
Rebecca, did you get what he said? I didn't get it all written down.
Yeah, Eric had stated limiting these um to this set of allegations to the um ORS one. Nine seven oh five um tied to these accusations filed on August twenty ninth, two thousand twenty five, yes.
Is there someone who would like to make that motion?
Oh, sure.
Is that John?
That's me.
John made a motion to um delegate authority to Rebecca Keegan. For ORS, what I didn't get it all down. Uh what, and we need a second on that. And Janelle's second? Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'll tag in.
You want to tag in, Jerry?
Courtney.
You said you want to tag in?
Yeah, well, I just said I'd second it.
J- Janelle seconded, you're good.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, I will take a roll call vote, Jerry?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, I'm just kind of breaking up, I don't have a real good signal on this end.
Okay. John?
Yay.
Brett?
Yay.
Laura? Janelle?
Yeah.
Tori?
Yeah.
Ryan?
Yay.
And uh Janice votes yes. That motion passed. Rebecca?
Yes.
Was there anything else on our agenda?
Um no, but if you guys would like to have a quarterly meeting, I'd like you guys to discuss when you want to have that meeting, um. We normally meet in May and November, um and if you want to have a um a meeting coming up, let's. Since you're all here, can we set that so it's easier for me um to move forward on the next meeting?
Okay, so that would mean. Uh we'd have to do it early October?
We normally would meet next to November, but.
Right.
If you want to set a schedule or if you want to try some, I don't, I don't know what you guys want to do.
Is that meeting already scheduled for November?
No.
Okay.
July. December. I'm wondering if we do, October would be quarterly, I don't know about July, the May. We have to meet in May for the budget, sorry.
Mm-hmm.
Or is it April?
May.
May.
We had that meeting in November and I think one reason for it was after all the hunting seasons and it was after people got cattle shipped and. People got all the crops put in and everything, it seemed like people had a little more time in November uh than they did earlier or later.
Yeah, so a suggestion might be to do November and then have a February meeting.
So just going off of what it was having a May, if you guys would like to have a meeting November, February, May and August. Um that's like quarterly, um but that's not, I mean, I don't know if that. Will happen as far as everybody's schedule with farming and you know, everything else, but um we can have one in November and then February.
Yeah.
Okay.
I yeah, I think that gives you enough notice, you can get stuff ready and.
Yeah. Then normal, okay, that's normal, okay. Okay, thank you.
Can I, on the meetings, um how does, how is the agenda built? Is that something that the board kind of? Do you have agenda items that you need to adjust to the board or how's that work?
You guys, I'm I'm I was sitting here thinking, honestly, there's lots of ways that boards run and you guys can do your own notices, you can do your. you guys can do your own notices, you can do your own agendas, you can do uh do have your own legal counsel, you can go and do things however you want to do, um special district boards, you know, I've worked for this is the third one, and sometimes they have their own legal counsel and the um chairperson does the agenda, the chairperson runs the meeting, and they're the ones that do the public notices and stuff, so you guys have the power, it's it's completely up to you and on what you want to do.
That historically hasn't been how this board is run, but that doesn't mean that it has to be that way. If we choose to have a stronger influence.
Let's just retake this till the November meeting and then make it the item on the table, maybe, uh what did you say? On the agenda item about how we do meetings. And maybe a short outline of what that should entail, where's we'll go down.
And if that's the case, November meeting was um how was a lot of program updates, would you like to only have like two program updates then, because you're gonna have quarterly meetings and then you have.
Towards the quarterly meetings, it's gonna get us more time to do business if we were to break them up.
Mm-hmm. So then, so then you only have a couple program updates, then you have more time to discuss how you um are going to.
Keeping down.
There's nine programs.
Pardon me?
Nine programs, no.
I know, there's more than that, I was just drawing numbers.
No, I think that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for your time.
It's up to you, Janice, I think that everything else is done in here.
Okay, and then you'll just send out a poll for uh making the date of the next meeting then?
In November, yes.
Yes, okay, that sounds good and uh this meeting stands adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.